All right, we will go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting order. It's 5:30. If everybody can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, everybody, for attending online. We appreciate it. This is our school board business meeting. Tonight, we will start off with special recognition with Mr. Lance Hanson, who will walk us through our 25-26 student school board representative and representative-elect, as well as our new Kennewick School District administrators.
Okay, thank you, all right. Good. All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Galbraith. So, we are fortunate to have amazing school board representatives. So, as you can see, seated to my right, who was the school board elect last year, Mr. Diego, right? He's right here. And over here, off to our left, is Lea Nia. And if they want to take, like, two seconds and just say a couple of words, and I'll let you do it as well to the board. Just, like, kind of, say hi, who you are, what school you go to, and what you're looking forward to through this year.
All right. Good evening, board members and members of the community who are joining us tonight. My name is Diego Anguiano. I'm a senior at Maekan, and I'm a full-time running start student at WCU Tri-Cities, so go Cougs! And I'm just really...
Wait a second.
We do not endorse WCU Tri-Cities. We are not being paid for promoting. And I'm an intern here at the Kennewick School District with their IT department, so I'm very happy about that. And I get to be here a little more than just being here at the school board meetings. And I'm really looking forward to getting this year started and get the ball running.
Thank you, Diego. Lea Nia, you want to come on up? And just, kind of, so everyone online could hear you as well.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lea Nia Sosa. Hi, I'm Lea Nia Sosa. I'm a junior at Southridge, and this year, I'm excited to contribute and learn.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Again, I just would like to compliment not only these two, but they're amazing representatives. I had a chance, I'll talk to the board about this a bit later, about our SAC group, our student advisory group, but you couldn't ask for two better representatives to work with the board. Thank you. So, the next portion, I'm really excited. I'm going to actually turn this over to Ms. Johnson, Melissa Johnson, and she's going to introduce our, I think we have most or all of our new administrators here.
Great.
Yep.
Can you hear me? Melissa Johnson, Assistant Superintendent K-12, for the record. And I have some amazing directors, Director of Secondary and Director of Elementary, and they're going to actually introduce our principals, because I think it's important they know them. And so, they're going to actually do the introductions.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Pratt, Secondary Education, and I feel really excited tonight, because we are welcoming amazing new talent to the secondary building administrative team. And so, I'm just going to ask that you guys stand and wave when I call your name. But I feel really privileged. We have such a great team, secondary team, here in the Kennewick School District. And these people just are talented. They've had a great start. They've been interacting with kids. And it's just been fun to see. So, anyway, I'm going to start by welcoming our new Assistant Principal at Kennewick High School, Marion Benedict, coming to us from the Richland School District with lots of administrative experience over there. So, welcome, Marion. Yay!
Yay, Marion.
Our next person I'm welcoming is sitting right behind her. We have an amazing teacher, leader, that comes to us from the other side of the United States, in Indiana, Lori Brillhart. So, she's out at Desert Hills. Okay, we have two new teammates out at Park Middle School this year. They're both the Assistant Principals. They're both super talented, joining Sean there at Park. So, the first one that I'd like to welcome comes to us from the Pasco School District, Instructional Coach, and that's Courtney Dallas. Welcome! And the next Assistant Principal that I'd like to welcome tonight is from Grandview, also an instructional coach, and his name is Joel Ledesma. And I'm not sure if Gerardo was able to make it tonight. I don't see him. But we also have a fabulous new Assistant Principal over Highlands, and he comes to us from Eastgate Elementary. So, some of you guys may already know him. So, anyway, that's my fabulous new team. So, thank you so much for giving them a warm welcome to the Kennewick School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Jared Lind, and Director of Elementary Education. I have three that I'm going to introduce this evening, and one is en route from Office Depot. Hopefully, she makes it. We're going to start with Alejandro Ortiz. Stand up. Alejandro is our new Assistant Principal at Amistad Elementary. He's coming from the Pasco School District, super excited with the skills that he's bringing to our district. And then, we've got Anthony Boger. And he... He is the new Assistant Principal at Washington Elementary. His proud principal, Jen Beach, sitting right next to him. He is coming from the Waluke School District, and he's an elementary administrator and former teacher. And fun fact for him, he did not eat lunch today. Just a normal day. So, thank you. And then, finally, we have Kathy Page. And Kathy Page is our Director of KDC, our Developmental Preschool. Kathy comes with massive amounts of skills, from being an administrator to even coaching future principals through the program at Gonzaga. And hopefully, she pops in. And she pops in in the next 30 seconds. Can we just promise to stop everything and applaud her?
You also have Amistad Nixon, right?
Yes. Kent Nixon. We're doing our brand-new faces. But Kent Nixon is also at Amistad, coming from Fuersa. Okay?
Great.
Thank you. We're excited.
So, again, you can see, hopefully, the board can see the enthusiasm. I was very impressed with our new administrators when we brought them in individually from the new employee piece. They've jumped right in and gone right to work. So, you know, we're in great shape with our new administrators in the Kennewick School District. And they're smart, see, because they're leaving. They know exactly what to do.
There they go.
There's wisdom with the young ones.
There they go. All right. Well, that wraps up special recognition. So, we will jump into communication from parent staff and district residents. Thank you.
Here, all right.
There we go! Thank you. Welcome. All right. So, well, we'll start. No comments online, okay? We will start then with Lea Ann Perso. You're up, the only one.
Hello, board. Speaking tonight as a mother of a 4th grader at Fuersa and a 7th grader at Chinook, just came from the soccer game. So, I wanted to say, first of all, I had the chance to speak with Mr. Valentine before the summer started about school lunches, breakfast, and nutrition. And I was very pleased to hear about the initiative he's taken to really examine what's going into our kids' food. I've been, for quite some time, alarmed with some of the quality and the ingredients that we're putting into our kids' lunches. And I know I'm not the only mom who feels this way. A lot of them are loaded with preservatives, dyes, sugars. I don't allow my children to eat breakfast at school because of it. I don't allow them to drink the chocolate milk at school. It has 22 grams of sugar. The recommended daily sugar intake for a child is 25. So, pretty quickly, if you eat breakfast and you drink some chocolate milk, you're 40 grams of sugar. There, that goes for the day. Mr. Valentine's pilot program over the summer focused on whole foods, less processing, less sugar, fruits and vegetables that are more consumable and appealing to little ones. The foods that have highly processed things with filtered modified cornstarch, corn syrup solids are unhealthy. Dyes, sugars, soybean oil, palm oil, these can cause gut irritation, irritability, and that high spike and crash. We are what we eat, and I don't want to be feeding my children food that's, you know, fast and cheap. And I'm trying to educate them at home. And I appreciate the efforts that have gone into really reexamining some of those foods that are in our schools. And so, I commend him, and I hope that we continue to raise the bar on what we're serving our kids at breakfast and lunch. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That wraps up communications from parent staff and district residents, unless there's anybody else here who cares to speak. All right. Moving along, we will get into Board Member and Student Representative Report. So, we will start down here with Diego.
Good evening, board members. As I said, my name is Diego Anguiano, and I have the pleasure of being the Student Representative to the Board of Directors for this school year. I just wanted to comment on our Superintendent Student Advisory Council, which met for first time of the school year this morning. And I think Mr. Hanson was very pleased with the student group, as well as myself. And today, we just kind of introduced ourselves. And because we're receiving a lot of, I think it was 3/4 or 75% of our students are new to the group. So, I think what we did today was very valuable. We met together, defined what mission and vision is, and then we collaborated on creating a mission and vision for our team and kind of got ready just to get the group going for the school year. And apart from that, I myself also started my school year, I think, four or five weeks ago at WCU Tri-Cities. So, everything's running along pretty nicely.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Diego. All right. We'll swing down there. Mike?
Really, not much. I attended the Welcome Back Assembly there that Mr. Hanson put on. I thought it was well-attended, lots of energy, thought very well-received. So, that was very good. Other than that, just hoping to get out and do more stuff here as the days go by.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Dr. Miller?
I was able to make the first little bit of the, kind of, the pre-game for the Welcome Back Assembly. It looked like it was going to be a great event. Saw the beginnings of that. Also, was able to get to some different sporting events. And just excited to see the kids back in school. Looks like we're excited for a great new year.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Gladhill?
Yeah, so, just getting my own family up and running for the beginning of the school year has taken most of my time. But I have been able to set up some school visits with Mr. Hanson. Got three of those right now planned for this month, hoping to get a few more going. So, mostly prep work on the school visit side. I have, did spend a little bit of time in preparation for today's study session, going over the Plaza General Handbook, creating a spreadsheet so that we could use as a tool to discuss during the study session earlier today, and just getting ready so that I can man that general assembly here in a couple of weeks. So, other than that, just a handful of sporting events. Really loved seeing our new superintendent out on the sidelines at the football game last Friday night. That was really, really great. And I know he has plans to be at the Kennewick... Is it the Kennewick game on Friday?
Yeah, I'll talk more about that.
Okay, perfect.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. All right. So, I was kind of blowing through some of the stuff. Had done a lot. We had a nice meeting with Lance. It was great. Had a nice meeting with Melissa, where she had... Oh, yeah. So, I was able to sit down with each one of them for an hour or two, or an hour and a half. I don't know how long it was, whenever we got done talking. And it was really just good to kind of just hear their background, their history, get to know them, and the vision, have them understand my thoughts and vision. Lea, I appreciate you coming today. It's, I hope that the healthy lunch thing catches on. And it's definitely not just me. I mean, we have our rock star back here, who's been working with me and working with the menu and everything. And so, I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the community catching on to that and hope that everybody gets behind it. Because I really do believe that our kids are what they eat, and that as we continue to improve, and it's not an overnight process, there's a lot of bureaucracy. But I think that our school lunches specifically have improved. Whereas now, I'm kind of thinking about working on breakfast. It's a big ship to turn, but we've got a lot of things going. So, it might be a few-year project, but we're here for a couple of years. So, that's good. I was able to attend an event called Indivisible Tri-Cities. It's a group. They had an event. I would say 95% of the people there did not agree with me ideologically. But I had, I would say, six very significant conversations. And at the end of them, of those six, three of them said, "You know what? I support you." And three of them said, "You're not the monster that I thought you were. I don't hate you anymore." So, I feel like that was really good, just making ground, just that communication piece, and just continuing to talk to people was really, really important. So, and I would encourage anybody in the community, if you have a question or disagreement with a board member, the best way to get your voice heard is to sit down with them, right? I mean, a conversation, that's how... So, if somebody has a point of view that might be different than mine, like, I don't know that point of view. So, having them sit with me and helping me understand them, them understand me, now we can start to come together and kind of, now we can be on the same team and work together for a common goal, rather than fighting against each other. Because fighting is useless, right? So, we really want to come together. Visited a number of open houses. I gave it a few. Highlands, Eastgate Park, a number of other ones. Just great, great schools. Two new, I met several of the new Assistant Principals. That's great. Met with some community members. Our school district opened a couple of doors and had another chance to sit down with some community members. Melissa was there to mediate, although there wasn't any mediation necessary. That was the thing that the community members I had met with were like, very nervous that it was going to be like this bloodbath. But it was actually a very cordial, great conversation. So, that was really nice. And then, the last thing I want to say is, we have an exchange student from Spain. And I've been talking to her a lot about schools and stuff. And she was talking about how much harder she felt like the schools in Spain were, how much more rigorous they were. And then, I kind of, we kind of got in this conversation about America. And some of the things she said to me really stuck out to me. She said, "You know, even though, you know, I think our school system is..." She thinks it's better, and that's fine, and it might be. I don't know. But she said, "But I wanted to come to America, because there's something about America that Americans always want to win." Americans, they think that everything they go to, they're going to win. Everything, they want to win. Everything in the Olympics, they want to win every single match. They want to... And I said, "That's it right there. That's what makes us special, is the American spirit." And so, I really want to promote that in our school district, that American spirit. That's the unique part about our country. So, I just feel so strongly about that. I really do think that if kids graduate and they believe in our country because of the infrastructure, because of the freedoms, because of the American spirit, that that's the missing ingredient for success that every kid needs. So, you know, I just want to encourage everybody in our staff to keep trying to promote that, the love of our country and the American spirit. And with that, Diego, thanks.
All right. Thank you. So, a lot of the events shared here, I attended as well. I had the privilege to attend the Back to School Awards Ceremony and Comeback, Welcome Back Assembly. I was able to pass out some awards with Mr. Hanson. Attended a few different open houses. That's always fun to get to and see. I think my favorite part of it is the middle schools, where all the 6th graders are trying to do their lockers, and their, you know, parents are showing up and all this stuff. It's the full hallway is just lined with kids doing that. Had the privilege to go on a school visit last week with Mr. Hanson as well at Southridge, and just support him out in the schools and get to see what's going on there. So, that was another good experience. I think that's it. And I think just, I have one little thing I'm going to share here, and then we'll move on. And this is just a reminder for all of us, and Mike had touched on this a little bit, but in light of today's events, I just wanted to share, civil discourse is the cornerstone of a healthy democracy. We may disagree on policies and perspectives, but violence has no place in our political process. Lasting solutions come from respectful dialogue, not division and force. And so, again, just a reminder to, let's have dialogue and see where we can meet on things. We're not always going to agree, but that doesn't mean we have to necessarily go as far as things went today. So, we will move on to consent items, and I will take a motion to approve those.
I will move to accept the consent items as presented.
Thank you. Patty, we will go with the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Buzzing right along. We have no unfinished business. So, we will move into new business. It will be Policy 3207, Students, Prohibition of Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying, and Cyberbullying. And we will have Ms. Johnson.
All right. So, outlining this is just a policy to stay in compliance. I guess if it was on, that would help. Okay, we'll start again. We are discussing Policy Number 3207. This policy is compliant with Washington HB 1296. That is the first section, and it basically is a mandatory change to comply with the current state Washington laws. And we added a couple of words, ethnicity, homelessness, immigration, and narrow divergent. We did also take a section from the bottom, and by "we" I mean Drew Hanlon. He's the one that did all of the changes. Drew did. And so, we also moved gender identity from the list under distinguished characteristics and moved that up. We did change the changing of the words in the policy. And the only reason why we did that is because it was stated in the state law. And the RCW, which is a revised code of Washington, 28A.642.010. And so, those are the changes, just for compliance.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? If we have no questions, go.
Will this be adopted as written? I didn't have any content changes to make, but there are a few places where there's some missing letters and some things along there. So, maybe before it's submitted onto our website and everything, just take like another look at it.
You got it.
Like, the first paragraph that says "dog guide" instead of like "dog guide", I think it's supposed to say "guide dog". I'm not sure. But there's just a few... And I can send my notes along to someone.
Yeah, we would love it.
Okay, great.
And then, other than that, was just technical changes, capitalizations, and then some wording changes. Yeah. And we'll get your recommendations as well.
Okay. If we have no comments or anything else, I will go ahead and take a motion to adopt Policy 3207, Students, with Britain's changes she submitted.
They don't have to...
No, I'm just... Not all... We're zooming through. We're wasting time.
I don't, I'm never confident on how. I move to accept Policy 3207, Prohibition of Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying, and Cyberbullying as presented. First and second reading.
Okay. Perfect. Patty, we will go with the roll call vote, please.
Are we doing an advisory vote?
Yeah, we'll do an advisory vote.
Diego?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes. All right. Policy 3207 passes 5-0. Next up is Policy 2121, Instruction, Curriculum Adoption. Mr. Hanson, you are up.
Okay, thank you. So, this particular policy brings us into compliance with Senate Bill 5462. It's passed not most recently, but the previous that said that school boards were required by October 1st to include, to include or to recognize components of the bill in their policy. Here's what the recommendation that you'll see. We actually have two parts in our school board policy that reference curriculum adoption. And I want to make sure that I point this out very clearly. In one of the instances, it says we'll be in compliance with state law, and the other one, it did not. And the other part that you'll see, I've added the word committee, and there's a reference to the committee, which is the Curriculum Committee that looks at the Curriculum Instructions Committee. So, I wanted to make sure that that was included in this particular policy, so that we are now in compliance with state law. So, regardless of what the state law says, when we say in school board policy that we'll follow, then we are in compliance with that particular component. The other thing I want to make sure that we know is, when we are reviewing curriculum, that we have an anti-discriminatory part that's embedded in that piece that we will look for curriculum that does not discriminate. So, those are the two components that are embedded in this particular piece. What it does is, it allows us to be in compliance with the Senate Bill. And then, just FYI on this, there's a reporting component to this, which allows us to... Did you not see it?
I didn't see this one. Was this one... I don't know if it was in the original packet. It might have been in the one that was sent out this afternoon. I don't know. I don't remember seeing whether it was.
Sure. All right. I want to make sure you see it. We have two word changes. Yeah.
It starts on Slide 70. Oh, are you on the right one? That's not the right one.
I don't see that's... Mine was open to 24.
That was last week's. That's the last.
So, you see. Dr. Miller, you see it?
I saw it previously, yes.
Maybe.
Can bring it up?
Melissa's going to grab it.
So, really, as we discussed, really, the changes, rather than trying to pull out everything from the law and go there, we're in compliance with the law. So, if the law changes, they tweak something, whatever, we're still in compliance with the law, rather than having to rewrite and update.
I see.
And again, yeah...
You're good.
No, again, just so the board, we have two policies that reference curriculum adoption. And I wanted to make sure that they were in alignment with each other and compliant with the law. So, that the recommendation of the administration with this edit would allow us to be in compliance with the law.
Ann brings us in compliance with the other policy.
It brings us in compliance with the expectation. It's just to look at model policy. I got a version of what that looks like. My recommendation is the state that will be in compliance with the law. That means that if law changes, we're going to follow the law. It doesn't change any of the other aspects that go into curriculum adoption, which includes a committee that reviews the materials. It doesn't change any of that. It will give guidance. The law would give guidance to that curriculum committee. We have anti-discriminatory language that says we will not discriminate in any, or any type of curriculum that purports or says that we're, that purports to discriminate in the types of practices. It eliminates that. So, in essence, it captures Senate Bill 5462.
Okay, so, let me make sure I understand. So, you're saying that you took the original policy and rewrote it so that you've embedded the RCW in it, so that as the RCW changes, we no longer have the need to come back and review it? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, by the adding to our existing policy to be in compliance with state law, regardless of what the law is, we are saying that we will follow state law, and our policy was telling us.
Okay.
So, if there's change in state law, we don't have to continue to rewrite our policy.
I don't know if I like that.
We have to remember too, that policy dictates stuff. Procedure is how we build that out. So, there's also procedural pieces to all of it that would essentially functionally change, right? So, if you say, "So, this is our policy, and then here's the steps," somehow those are actionable.
Yeah, this is...
So, if there's a major overhaul to this RCW, we will review the procedure that goes along with it.
Now, yes, thank you for that distinction. So, the procedure is separate. The cabinet will have the procedure components that will allow... There's multiple other steps in this. The policy simply says, this is, you know, basically says we have the authority as a school board to adopt curriculum. And here is how we view curriculum adoption. And remember, there are two. This is just one of the policies. The other policy that we have, that goes into more specificity on the things that we look for in curriculum, it already includes the clause and be compliant with state and federal law. This one did not. So, I wanted to make sure now it was parallel to our other one.
Okay.
And our procedures, and we also, just if you want to go down and have an additional detail, we are working on what I'm calling Three Prongs of Opt-Out. You've got opt-out, you've got review of curriculum materials for individuals, a review of individual curriculum and library materials for everyone. So, that's a kind of separate piece that cabinet will have in place on the procedure side. Also, the forms. So, that way, it's very simple for parents if they have questions about any type of... on the procedure side. Also the forms, so that way it's very simple for parents if they have questions about any type of materials.
Good, more?
I just want to make sure that there's, that if there's a change in the law, and it necessitates a change in our procedure, that will be presented to the board.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good, okay. If there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept policy 2121, curriculum adoption as presented for first and second reading.
Okay.
Diego?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That wraps up new business. We will move into reports and discussions. Ms. Saint-Hilaire will walk us through K through 12 student growth and proficiency targets. The floor is yours.
Before you get started, we used to have a pre-slide that kind of directed the board. And we, I seem, that seems to be missing. I, we actually asked to have that put in, and I would like to have that remain in the packet so we know if we're taking action and.
Yep, I do, yeah.
We can do that.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, good evening. I'm going to share some of our student assessment data this evening with you. And this aligns with our strategic plan goals, that we are making progress and that our students are making growth and also meeting grade level standards. So tonight, we're going to focus mainly on early literacy for our kinders first and second. We assess that with STAR. I also am going to share our last full year smarter balance assessment results for ELA and math. And then I want to spend a little bit of time sharing about what we did last year to get some of those results and our greatest areas of need that we're addressing this full year. So we'll start with our early literacy for our kinders first and second. We assess early literacy with STAR, Early Lit, in Kinder and first grade. And then in second grade, we have the STAR reading. That, what I have on here right now aligns to our key performance indicators that we have. And I have noted here, this is the percentage of Kinder first and second who moved, who grew. This is a growth target. So these students moved either from urgent to intervention, intervention to on watch, or on watch to at or above benchmark. I don't have previous years, because this is, last year was the first year we had STAR and Early Lit for all students. So this is really setting the base for our early literacy in Kennewick. What this doesn't show you is kids who were already there. They didn't have room to grow because they'd already met the, the goal for their grade level. So I wanted to take a minute this year and show you if, and this percentage is not this description of the indicator, but it's important. You'll see we're missing a lot of our students. So we want to, Mr. Hanson, I wanted to take a minute to show the board at kindergarten, students who made growth and students who had already been at that level. Does that make sense?
So I just want to interject if that's okay, just real quickly. So a couple of things that you'll notice is you're going to get quantities now. So it becomes more, not personal, but it becomes real, like we have faces and names behind this. So that's this, the subcategory, and she may have talked about that below. So if you look at the first one, we had 684 students who had the ability to grow a tier or a level, and of which 375 did. In the second one, that's the total picture of those. And again, you'll, you'll hear me say a lot, we're going to be proficient or growing. We want to do two. And those, if they were already at a level in which there were no tier to grow to, unfortunately, we were leaving them out of the discussion. I think that painted an un, maybe unjust picture of the performance level of our students in early childhood, which is those access skills where it's essential to what creates the foundation for all access for learning later. So I appreciate the adjustment here, and I'm hoping that gives you a little more clarity as we're looking at our key indicators.
Just to be clear, to make sure I understand this. So we're saying, for example, in kindergarten, 36% of the kids were not at grade level and didn't improve.
They did not grow from one to the other, and they weren't already there. Yes. So.
But does that, does that take, is there improvement within that? If they didn't grow to the next tier, but can you grow within that piece? So there, so there is, there could be some minimal growth potentially within that tier.
Kids who are already grew and slipped out as well.
Yeah, there's about 100 of those, it looks like. So I, I mean, I just, again, like we've talked about, to me, significant cause for concern. We're already seeing by second grade, 39% of the kids are not on grade level and aren't improving towards grade level, just certainly a cause for concern because, yeah. And this is in terms of, of reading literacy. It's pretty important by grade three, they're on grade level, or they never catch up.
Absolutely. So, so this was growth, kids who are showing growth. In our key performance indicators for K-12, we don't have proficiency, which is what you were just talking about, Dr. Miller. We did want to put in a slide as well to show who, how many by number and percentage at each of those are at grade level for Kinder first and second grade. And those are measured with STAR.
I, I guess my point being is, I mean, these obviously even worse, but my point being is at least on the other one, 39% of those kids though aren't growing. They're stuck. That, that means almost more than a third, getting closer to half of our kids are not a trajectory to catch up, and they're in second, first and second grade. That, that's particularly problematic for me because if they're not on a trajectory that will catch them up, they, they're definitely not going to be there by third grade. That means they're stagnant or falling farther behind. That, that to me is incredibly concerning.
Well, the one thing about it is you are, which your numbers are. And we want to make sure we're extremely transparent, and that's why I wanted to include these components. Having said that, and you're right, you can have growth internal to a band. We, our, our, our staff is extremely aware of the needs of the students and the expectations that we are approaching, a different representation, to make a long story short.
Yeah.
And this, I hope, helps clarify and doesn't put us in two conversations. Meaning, yes, I want our students to be growing. However, the ultimate goal is for them to be on grade level and making sure that we have the correct assessments to determine what that looks like and feels like. And even more importantly, that those assessments give our instructors the data needed so that we can get to address the skills in which our students do not have to show proficiency. So this is a, it is what it is, and this is where we're at. And I'm hoping at this point next year, I'm hoping, we will have different results, whether they're better or worse, we'll have different results for us to not only examine, but to determine whether or not the things that we are putting in place are having impact. We just adopted a new curriculum, so it's got to give us an opportunity to be embedded. And I'm talking, I'm taking your presentation, sorry. Alyssa's like, shut up, Lance. But the idea is that we will have the ability to determine the impact of the decisions that we are making collectively to ensure the things that we want with our students. But we have, we, we got to know where we're at. And I'm not ever going to not show you where we are, because that's it.
And Alyssa, were these numbers, are these end of year numbers?
This is in the spring, yes.
Oh, spring.
And it, it's not exact. If a child moves in and, like, we can't get all of the students. There, there are some variables, but this is at, during that spring window. Okay, so that's early literacy. Thank you for that, Mr. Hanson.
Will you go back one more time? Sorry, not to over. I really want to make sure that when you're looking at the key skills, I don't want to gloss over that. Because when you're looking at the components of phonemic awareness, phonetics, you know, our vocabulary acquisition, word recognition in concepts, or, or you have like text fluency, those are the skill that we want to be able to give that information to the instructors. It's not like they can do it individually, but then we'll set up appropriate interventions to attack those skills. And with, if that's embedded in the science of reading, and we have Scarborough's open, I won't get into the detail there, but I, I don't want to minimize, hey, look at the skills that our students are actually asked to do and how we're performing relative to those skills.
Okay.
Sorry, to tie back to what Josh was saying, so at this, I mean, this is where we're at. But I think you've always been an advocate of trying to understand the steps in between and if it's working. And I think that's what we're going to be getting as we move forward. And so that, I think that's where, again, ties back to everything you've been saying, but now we'll hopefully get those. We're doing X, Y, and Z to.
And not to overemphasize it, we actually have numbers. It's not a percentage. You see, like, and there are faces behind those, both on the success side and the.
And what it tells us is, is that, you know, let's take grade one, for example. You're looking at 700 kids. That, that's not a small, you know, this isn't a small number. This isn't a statistical, we're not hiding anything statistically. That's 700 kids that are not, not on grade level in first grade. And then if we go back to the slide before, most, most of those 700 kids aren't, aren't, yeah. So I, I appreciate your, what we're doing. We're, we're, we're going to be focusing on how we're going to change because, I may have to be cynical, but what we're doing right now is not working. I mean, half of the kids aren't, more than half of the kids aren't there. So whatever we're doing, we have to change.
I'd like to make a comment. And I've been thinking about this for like the last 10, 15 minutes, and I just, I don't know, maybe this isn't the right time to interject it, but maybe it is. And it has to do with discipline, and I will tie it into this. You know, we just kind of have two policies. One policy is about bullying and harassment and other. I just hear a lot from teachers, the thing I hear most from teachers is, is discipline. And, and I actually heard somebody on the, on the news this week, they said, you, you can't discipline your way, or you can't suspend your way to a safe classroom. And I thought to myself, I thought about that for, for like hours. I thought, you know what, you actually can't. I mean, if you actually take the, the certain kids out, then that classroom will be different, right? But then now, but then, I mean, when you do that, then there's these kids that have been taken out of classrooms. So like, how do we handle those kids? And how do, because the, the, the thing is, when that, when there's certain kids, one or two kids usually in a classroom, and then, and the whole, the whole learning is disrupted, right? There's, there's a whole, there's 20 other kids who are just not learning like they should be because one or two people. And I really do kind of think, and after the more I talk to teachers, I always kind of says, always in my mind is like, because I just wonder how much learning loss we're having because of one kid in the classroom, two kids in the classroom. And I just wish there was a way we could just take that kid out, have a different intervention with that kid. So the other kids can continue to learn, and then maybe give that kid the special thing that he or she needs. And I don't know, that's just, I don't know, I feel, I feel the need to say that, but I just.
What I hear is we have another presentation that we're going to come talking about disposition.
I know, I know.
So we've got.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to move on.
Yeah.
We're going to look now at smarter balance, ELA and math. And we're going to look at it differently this year than previous years. So we've put the grade levels up altogether on one slide. So in this slide, we can see how a grade has been performing year to year at the district level, but we can also follow cohorts. So what I mean by that is these third graders here are now the fourth graders here. You can see a slight number change in the kids. You can see it where they are here and here. So that's the cohort going through the system. So we're able to see if there's a year to year. We can look at the data both ways on these slides. We also drew lines here so we could see the eighth graders in 21, 22 here are the 10th graders here. And same with this one. I do, I do want to note that we haven't, we had 8% of our students last year in 10th grade who did not even attempt the assessment. So we have a challenge of really accurately seeing the health of the system because we don't have all of our students taking the, the assessment.
Why, why is that? Is there?
So it's not a requirement to graduate. It could be a pathway. A student might use it as a pathway, and they would take the assessment. But there are a lot of students who don't, don't choose to come and take it. We have, we have a really big challenge with getting.
So these are the same students that may have chronic absenteeism, or, okay. So it is offered to every student, just don't come and take it?
Yeah.
Really quick, what, what years were affected by COVID specifically? Was it 2021, or was it 21, 22? I can't remember if 22, 23 was still affected or not. That's what I can't remember.
We put 21, 22 on here, and we left 20, 21 off.
2021, 22 is a COVID year?
There's still a lot of impact.
Yeah, there's still a mass.
Yes, there was hybrid attendance concerns, yes.
But by 22, 23, all of that was gone, correct? I'm just trying to make sure I've got my calendar right.
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect.
We are still having attendance.
Right, right. No, but, but what I'm saying is, is none of the distance learning, none of that was still implemented at that point.
By 22.
Okay, I'm just trying to look at the numbers.
Are, are there any significant difference when the cohort moves from like, let's say, third, third to fourth grade? Because there's additional whatever requirements or stand, like, is there, is there any significant?
We usually see a dip in sixth grade. It's very typical to see a dip in sixth grade. You can see those here. Usually they, they regain, and typically we'll see some bounce back by eighth grade. We're kind of up and down, if you can see it. Some are, some aren't.
Well, a couple of things that I look at, I just want, there are two things that I look at. I look at the cohort as one, but I also look at third grade only in itself because third grade is the first time that these students are exposed to this type of showing what you know. So I'm looking at that. The other thing that I'm looking at is implementation of curriculum or curriculum changes.
Yeah.
And were you going to talk about that? If you were, I'll be quiet.
We're just reading each other's minds.
Okay, I'll let you go.
So last year, last, well, I'm going to talk about it in, on the next one with math because we had a new K-5 math material. We will see impact on ELA this year, when we, when I'm here next year with you. So yes, looking year to year, we should be looking at, do we have a more rigorous curriculum? And I'm going to, let's just go there now. So here's the math for us, and we set it up the same way. And so speaking on this topic, so last year was our first year, and three, four, five was clear math. And you can see as, as a grade level, third grade stayed the same. We had a little bit of an uptick in fourth grade, a little bit more in sixth grade. Or I'm sorry, fifth grade, there. But you can see the trends as well by cohort for math. And you can, you can see more students didn't take the math in 10th grade. I also wanted to show we had some very intentional training with our eighth grade algebra teachers, pre-algebra, looking at standards, looking at the, what's called the smarter balance blueprint. So we see this here. We also see that this group coming through was, was up higher.
The new math curriculum is just K-5, right?
Yeah, but that foundation is so important to getting them set up in middle school.
Right. I mean, so when I looked straight across, I was encouraged at first. I was like, oh yeah, look at 46. Third grades stayed the same with the new curriculum. There was a jump in fourth grade. There was a jump in fifth grade, but then when you look at where the cohorts ended.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to address a little in our greatest areas of need for this year.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's as a whole. Do you guys want to discuss this one, or just keep going?
Really quick, grades, the 2021 grade six, they, they seem unusually poor, I guess. We don't have the, if you looked probably the year before too, both of those years. Do we, are we doing anything? I guess when we talk about interventions, I hope we're looking at those two groups. Those would be the two groups that were right at that fifth, sixth grade change during COVID. There may be something we want to do for them because it looks like they're particularly failing. So just to, as you look, you can see that they, and they're, they're really struggling as a group. I mean, we're not even a third person, you know, we're, by, by eighth grade, I, I mean, we don't have their numbers for ninth grade, but that, that looks particularly scary to me. Because if they're at 23% in eighth grade, I don't suspect we're going to see a. I don't suspect we're going to see a sharp increase.
Yes. We've got some work to do. I do want to talk a little bit about that. Anything else before I move on? All right, so, um, last, last year, we, we see some real strengths. And I put it in the appendix where we saw some good growth in schools. Um, where we see, uh, increases in growth and at grade level, we see, um, our schools are really harnessing and honing their professional learning communities. They're using data. They know the standards the students need to know. They know what it means to, um, be meeting standard and the rigorous level. Um, as we mentioned, um, then we had a new reading, our math curriculum last year. And we also worked with our ELA adoption about the science in reading and how important all those components to literacy are. Um, and, and we do think it's paying off. We can see where it's paying off more in some elementary schools than others. And we're gonna get into that and keep getting better at it. In middle school, we worked hard in math at that smarter balance alignment, and we, we've got to continue with it as well. Um, we've got some specialist meeting with our math teachers. Last year was the first time we had that training since before COVID of pulling our math teachers together to collaborate and work together as a team, um, and really know what the students need to know on the assessment, how rigorous the assessment is, and setting up our students for success. So we have to continue working on that. We need to get, um, we did some of that with our ninth grade, 10th grade algebra, um, and geometry as well for last year. So we, we know we need knowledge, we know we need skills, and we also need the, the disposition to really make this happen. And we have pockets of where it's working. So we want to go in and duplicate that and help out and give support where we need to. Um, that leads to greatest areas of gain, um, need. Um, and all of it is strengthening professional learning communities. Um, having a disposition where we are focusing on what students need to learn, that we're working together, we are all stronger together. Uh, we're, uh, sharing students, making sure they're getting the skills that they need, um, and that we're focusing on student results. We can't be happy with these results. We've got to change. Um, and working on that dispositions with our principals, with our, um, lead teachers, with our grade level teams. Um, there's a huge impact when we can do that. Um, so we want to continue with that. Um, at the elementary, we've got to continue, uh, working with our new ELA material and math. Um, those are two hard ones at the same time. Um, and really our schools are ready to be looking at common formative assessments. Um, and that, that's something in professional learning communities where we're working together. We're doing item analysis. We're really getting down to details and specifics and going after the skills that students need in a targeted manner. And we're gonna really work on that at the elementary this year. Um, I mentioned we're gonna work really hard on standards, identifying those essential standards in middle school and high school, both in math and in ELA. So we're teaching the right things. We're making sure we know what the students know, um, and we're assessing them and intervening when we need to.
So a couple of questions. You said there were a couple of bright spots where it does seem to be working. Uh, are those specific schools or what are, are, do we have any areas that are 80% proficiency or 90% proficiency?
Um, yeah, I can follow up with that. We did put some, yes.
Okay. So we have some, some schools or some classes that are 80% of proficiency in reading or math?
We, we can show you. I wanted to keep it at this.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, just.
But we look at this by school, we look at the grade level, and yes, we do.
I, I guess my question is, is, I, I appreciate, we're, we're identifying some of these things, but my question is, is do you think it's, do you think it's just that we haven't focused on the standards that causes 50% of our kids not to be able to, to read on grade level and 80% of, or 70 to almost 80% of our kids not be proficient in math? I guess my question is, I, I'm leading that question by saying, I think it's more than that. And I don't, I don't know the answer. I'm not pretending to, but I would, I, I would look to Lance, I hope, and, and with your cabinet, we need to do something radically different because we are, I, I struggle to believe that it's just that our teachers aren't teaching them the standards. I, I think we have probably been teaching the standards, but something's not working, obviously. I mean, the numbers, numbers don't lie. And to say that 50% to 80% of our kids in math or science aren't picking it up, I think it's more than just, hey, we gotta focus more on the standards. I could be wrong.
No, I appreciate that. And I, the, so there are a lot of things that we view. So when you're looking at an assessment, we look at taught, practiced, and assessed. Are we teaching, practicing, assessing in the same manner in which this assessment is doing? So there's a lot of peeling the onion when it gets back to, because here's what I would say. I have full confidence in our instruction. Like, I'm not even doubting our instruction. What I would say is, are we in alignment with the expectation of showing you how you know? Because so, for example, in mathematics, uh, the shift to more critical thinking, more in analyzing and approaching problems versus being algorithmic based, that is a shift in how we are asking students to show what they know. So as we are evaluating our, let's, so I'll just go back to the standards conversation. Essential standards are those things that must be mastered in order to get to the next level. And those are the things that we intervene on. We don't intervene on everything because we will never get anything done. So what is it then? We, that's where the kind of discussion with our professional staff ends, about what is essential for our kids in algebra? Like, for example, they have to be able, the, the linear equation, like being able to do graph, that piece, if that's essential. Algebra two, functions. And, and the other thing that's tricky on the last one, are our students in the correct math before they take the assessment? Because the smarter balance assessment actually has a lot of algebra two components in it that our students may or may not be exposed to. That's not fair, fair for our students. So there, yeah, is there more? The answer is yes. Understanding the blueprint, for example. Getting better projective data in our S back, which we don't have yet. In other words, going back to early literacy, we're getting feedback more frequently for instructors to make adjustments. Currently, our instructors get the autopsy, autopsy, like at the end. And then we're like, okay, now wait a second. So how do we get them the same level of feedback so that we can check in frequently and get the trajectory? Because if you don't have predictors and all you're using is last year's performance, some of, it's hard, I think as a professional, it'd be hard to kind of trust that, but it should give you a basis. So taught, practiced, assessed has to be in alignment with, I'm talking about the things that happen in the classroom have to be asked in a similar way as they're going to be asked. You'd be surprised, like, for example, in the smarter balance assessment, it's pretty rare for regular classroom assessments to have eliminators embedded in their questions. Like, for example, the smartest balance assessment might say, pick the best two responses. Right? You're shaking your head because you know exactly what I'm talking about. Whereas most of the time, we're just looking for a response in class. So that's a skill in, for lack of a better statistic, not that we're teaching to the test, I'm not talking about that, but understanding the rules. Are we assessing, teaching, and practicing in the same manner in which we're asking? So as it deeper, the answer is yes. Are we getting into that? The answer is yes. And collectively, if we can get to the point where we know exactly what the essentials are that are aligned, and we are intervening on those essentials, then we will, the rising tide will come if we're good. So, yes.
So also along those lines, so as these teachers are getting this feedback, who specifically is watching the teachers to see, you know, helping the teachers to be accountable to see that their students are improving testing throughout the year? So now that we have all that data, do we have, do we have somebody that's, is it the principal or the assistant principals, who are, who's looking at that data to say, hey, this class is, is showing exceptional improvement, this teacher, let's find out what this teacher is doing and see if we can implement in other classes, or, oh, this teacher is not seeing really any improvement. How can we help that teacher maybe see more improvement in their students? Or do we have somebody that's doing that?
That's an excellent segue to the next part of our like, if then so therefore, so that's perfectly in alignment to a methodology that we are working on, which includes like, well, I'll give you an example when we get to our cabinet parties, how, what that looks like, and it shows who does what, when, and there's a feedback loop embedded for the practitioner. Because one of the unfortunate things about our business is a lot of time we do it in isolation. So it's imperative that we have feedback. You know, someone put accountability, I don't look at that. I look at feedback, like what are the powerful practices that are getting us the results that we desire here? Can we replicate those in another page? Do we create a recipe card so that we can bake the same cake for a lot of? So do, are we examining those practices? Yes, yes. And in my superintendent report, I'll talk about walkthroughs and you can get an idea of the things that I look at as we're going through. And that doesn't mean I'm like trying to evaluate instruction. What I'm looking at is alignment and systemic approaches to get us the big, like the top, right? I'm trying to get the tide to move so all boats can come.
So, so there will be someone who is going to be.
Short answer is yes. And it's, the someone is more than just the principal because we have our aspect, our as in the district.
Yeah.
Right? And I'm gonna fold the board in. The board has a responsibility, so, and we're gonna be talking about that on our next study session on what that looks like. So the answer is yes.
Okay. I just, we're getting the data. We need to make sure that we're using it, and then feedback, we're getting feedback and being held accountable for that data because, yeah, we gotta pull, pull this up. We're thinking.
Yeah. Um, real quick, my only comment and not a question is just, um, aligns with, I think what Josh is talking about is, I, I just encourage no, no stone un, like, outside the box, the, this is what we've done in the past, kind of just trucking along, I think we, we can't do anymore. And I'm excited to see some of those practices and, and outside of the box solutions and thinking and things that we're gonna do to, to really right this, right the ship. Because we've, we've all been here long enough. We've seen the numbers. We're kind of, now it's, now we need some major movement. Yep. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So just before, I just, I want you to know, Alyssa just knocks it out of the park. She works extremely hard. Uh, before you leave later, I'll show you a little bit of what we're doing in actually our space. So, um, I appreciate the work that she put into this. And the work that she does is, and I could tell you, she's extremely reflective and is digging into the best practices that we can replicate. So I really appreciate her effort and the work of her department.
Yeah, and, and again, I, my, my, the, the critical, the numbers is hopefully is not reflective as criticism, but rather saying, look, I guess what, what I'm asking for is, is to Gabe's point, we've, we've seen these numbers now for a couple of years. And, and I guess what I'm, my feeling is, is I'm giving you license to say, look, let's try something very different. Let's, let's have people trying different things because right now, in the past, what we've done hasn't moved the dial. I mean, you can look through both cohorts and, and across, across the calendar years, and you're finding that the numbers all stay fairly consistent. So what we've done in the past didn't move the dial like we hoped it would. So let's, let's maybe throw out the playbook and try something really new.
Here's what I will say is I, I firmly believe that the foundation that has been built, although it may have felt static, has put us in a position to be more dynamic.
Okay.
That's what I will say.
All right, next up, as you guys probably have noticed, the agenda has changed a little bit. Uh, we are essentially closing the, the meeting with our superintendent report, so we will turn it over to Mr. Hanson to share some updates.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I, I just have, I like to, um, and I guess this is my deal, I have to kind of at the end, kind of give a rundown of some things that are going on in my world, so you can hear this. I have just a few items. Um, one, I want you to know enrollment's paused, right? And we'll have the, we'll have a report for you to give you as soon as things start to balance. Um, and not only that, Diego talked about the start of the year. I've been in buildings and I, I have been given positive, positive, positive feedback on the start of the year as well. It's been very smooth as far as getting things up and running. So I attest that to Dr. Brill Hartley. We're talking about transportation, food services, everything in alignment, ready to go. Uh, Eric, with, um, how many calls did you have? Help calls? You told me that today?
I was taking something like 2,900.
2,900 help tickets in technology and how many did you crank out? All but like 100, right?
Uh, flattery. We're down to like 270.
All right, just go with what I said. Yeah. Just go with me, just nod. This is a Madagascar moment. Okay. So the idea then, I just want you to know that, that, that the folks here are just absolutely cranking it to make sure that it's happening in our buildings. The focus barbecue, that's something that we mentioned. If you have the building on Friday night, that's a fundraiser for our safe and drug-free school activities. 5:37, Rob, is that correct? 5:30 before the football game, the focus barbecue. It's chili dogs. I'll be there. I'm gonna try and get a Kamaiken slash, or not Kamaiken, but Kennewick slash South Ridge shirt, maybe cut it in half. Deal to deal, or I'll change it halftime, or whatever the case may be. So being there and supporting our kids, excited about that.
To go over that, where, where, is that again, one more time, when?
So 5:30, Lamson Stadium. By the Fruitland Building. So come get a chili dog. It's fairly inexpensive. Those of you who are watching us online, it's like four bucks for up to 12 riding caps in a family, something like that. Anyway, there's a $10 for four. It's inexpensive. Bring cash, right? Bring cash. That's why I heard they're not, just got some checks. So go to the ATM before you come. Bring cash. Okay. The student, Diego talked about our student advisory, and I really appreciate, again, I can't say it enough, our students. I reminded them today, and it reminds me every time I see kittens, why we do what we do. We all wouldn't be sitting here if it weren't for our children, our students. That's why I have a job. That's why you are all elected. Uh, we have about 22, I think 22 students, 16. We didn't get Delta here, or I can't remember, a couple of the groups weren't able to make it. They cranked out their mission vision. I want them to go through the process in which we are doing in all of our schools and in our district. We will focus on our results, student learning, and we'll work collaboratively. And we talked about what that looks like for us. We're gonna dig into our collective commitments and norms so that they understand how to work as a council. And we just talked about the definition of what is a council. I'm really looking forward to their perspective because they had some great stuff as we charted. The language of our students is always, always amazes me, not because I'm surprised of it, because it's reflective of the moment in which they are in. And they're ready to represent the students of the Kennewick School District and to have a voice and to really inform the board about their experiences through their eyes, which I think is essential for our board to see. So I couldn't be happier for that. We have, I wanted to make sure the board's aware that we have set up preliminary training with the KEA with our IBP process, so interest-based bargaining. We have, um, agreed to, uh, co-sponsor, co-hire a group to come in and train. When you go through that process, it's essential that you're all speaking in the same language, and that starts in January. I'll make sure that the board, we'll have opportunities to keep the board updated as we walk through that process. There are eight members from our team, or it's a team that's made up of the KEA. Eight members have been designated from, from the LA, or from the LA or our side and the KEA side. So we have Alyssa, Tom, Melissa, myself, our two directors, and Tony and Lexi on our side. So I'll keep you updated as that goes. School visits. I had a commitment to get into every school in the first two weeks. I was close. We got about 1,000 classrooms. I got about 500 or so of them done. I didn't get into every classroom, but, um, we kind of had a running, uh, thing out there. Tom, how many did you get?
13.
13, okay. Now, these guys out there, they actually split them up, so in fairness to them, I said I'm willing to move on. So Tom got to 13. Alyssa, how many did you get to?
12.
12, okay. Melissa?
18.
18, all right. We're not competitive, Rob, because we're like texting each other. And I kept getting sucked into meetings. I was not happy about that. I have, uh, we're going to Kennewick. Um, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow. And then I have a couple of, um, schools on the way into town that I can grab on the way. Uh, it's important for me that I see the students and, um, uh, the staff. It's important that they see me. And I talk to everybody, Jenners, custodians, uh, or Jenners, custodians, same, uh, our food services, our, our, the face of the buildings, our administrative staff when they come in. Gabe had a chance to walk through with me, and I just kind of gave him an idea of the things I'm looking for. Like, at the beginning of the year, I want to make sure the heating and cooling's working. I look at like, um, uh, how many kids are in class? What's the distribution of the kids? What are we offering? And out of that, I've got two offers to come back and speak to their class. So it's, it's, it's good stuff.
Good luck keeping up too, by the way.
And I'm wearing tennis shoes. Yeah, I'm already.
Yeah, I'm like, where, where do you go? And he's over in here in a German class, speaking some German with the T-class, and then we're in Spanish, and he's, and I'm like, I'll wait in the middle here as you. It's good, good stuff.
So, and it's been fun. And of course, going to the football games and all that stuff, um, you know, again, we're here for the kids, so that's not. Uh, our cabinet walkthroughs, one of the things that was important to me is that our cabinet had a, the same lens. So when it gets to organizational structures, clarity precedes competence. In other words, we all have to be seeing the things, things the same way, communicating the same way, giving direction the same way. Because for example, from my perspective, I can see things one way, but I'm like four layers away, even five before I get to a student. So I have to trust and build that capacity in our, in our, in our cabinet. So Alyssa, Melissa and Tom and I have gone to, I think we're at about this, we're heading into four schools-ish. Every time we'll go in, and this is for us, it's not for the school, to be clear. This is for us to observe, come back, what did you see? And then I will ask fundamental questions about the PLC process. What did you see in regards to the four pillars and the three big ideas? Because sometimes as educators, we start picking stuff out, like stop, where's, where are these things that support the process? Because you have to have a foundation before you can build a house. All right. And we're excited about that. We picked a middle school, couple of elementaries, et cetera, et cetera. This is not though, like we are going to expand on this to our directors and then we'll get to our principals. As we start seeing powerful practices, we will start showing those things. Because if we're going to be a team, we're going to have to be vulnerable enough to know that there are things out there that we can continue to learn from others. And that was the theme of our leading learning. Thank you for shaking and nodding. Thank you for saying that. And our back to school leadership, which is a little bit different message than the back to school for our students, our teachers. The board priorities are, I talked about that, cabinet objectives. And lastly, the study session topics for our next one, we, you are going to get the opportunity and pleasure to have a different study partner next on the 24th. I, we have assigned some of our students to come in to be your partner and we're going to peel another portion of the mission vision back and let you start asking probing questions of our students about that. We started with a mission vision of the Kennewick School District with them to remind them what our obligation is for them. What we need to verify is that are we fulfilling that and to see it through the eyes of our student. That's going to be part of it and then we'll have some other pieces. So that's what I. Great. Questions for me?
Thank you very much. I think probably on behalf of all of us, we appreciate all that you guys are doing, the staff getting out, kicking the school year off right in, in all directions. So thank you very much.